City Council Work Study Session for February eighteenth. Please stand and join me in the political legion.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, our, uh, item one, maybe we're gonna jump ahead here for a moment because they, he is picking up, uh, another member of that group at Footberry. So they're running late.
Of Footberry?
Maybe, no.
Footberry?
No, they're, no, no, they're running late because they're picking somebody up at Footberry, but thank you, John, for clearing. Uh, which one of these is quick and easy? Is it fall cleanup? Or when we jump, if you don't like to fall cleanup?
Uh, this should be just, um, so we brought this to the previous work study, uh, in November. It was more of a historical, how we got here kind of a thing. This is really just a follow-up to what we think is a fairly straightforward decision. So if you go back to the last sheet, um, it's really a re-education. And if you look at that last sheet, while we're thinking of there just having this fabricated into a cardstock wire tag. Because most people, I, what we're finding out is, a lot of this is working out. They never see the flyer. They don't really have to pay for anything. They know that a neighbor's like, "Hey, you can put yourself up." And so they don't know rules, and then we go through, we get to this whole, we didn't pick it up, they don't know why, they call us and angry at us. So by putting this tag down and marking, "This is why," it's just a re-education, and it may take a year of these tags. And so that's, this is kind of the key piece in telling where they masterminded this. And so the proposal was, we're gonna continue it twice a year because we listened to council concerns that, you know, you don't do it twice a year, you just got twice as much stuff. So we're gonna continue to do it twice a year, we're gonna implement the new wire tag, and then we're gonna just be more stringent. And this is where we're gonna need support, because he's gonna get a lot of phone calls when I say no. And they'll always go, "Oh, well, not the mayor." Or you're gonna, you're gonna hear it as a consti- or, you know, they're gonna be like, "They didn't pick up my stuff, why?" You know, "This is why." Because they never saw a flyer, they didn't know they had to pay for appliances, you know, they couldn't put up, all the junk in their garage is out by the river. So this is gonna be a fun job. Yeah, so we need active effort for all of us, knowing that we're gonna go down this path, so needing that consistency.
Do we have time to send this out to the various utility bills?
Thank you. I, I, I know about the utility bill, but we, we'll get it in, we'll get it on our, on our webpage, and we'll get it on, uh, Facebook, and we'll, we'll do a better job.
And a press release.
Yeah, and push, uh, push.
Because we don't do, we got a little tiny, it's a tiny little, so many words.
We, we have a box.
It's computerized, it's a little box where we can type in so many characters.
And, and nobody's gonna see it.
Can we talk to Waze Pennington to see if they could send it out in their building? What that would take?
Uh, my, we can ask my concern if there was a, so, they may have confusion.
But we, we, you know, we need to do a better job communicating, pushing the information, and this is the after-effect. So when we don't pick that stuff up, we're gonna tag that file for those things that we're gonna need to pick up. And hopefully, re-educate our community a little bit of what the program's about, what we can and can't pick up, and, and, uh, and so we keep it going.
Yeah, that to me is, is the big thing. This is great, but it's after the fact.
Yeah.
If we could do something before, so that people hopefully won't get this notice.
Well, we said our flyers, our flyers are available, and then our release will be a long time ago. We may have put in, we did, we built, covers it.
Six, seven years ago, we had to outsource our, our, so, but we can do that, this is no doubt about it, we can do that job, pushing that information out, and we will.
Do we know how much it would cost for a direct mail from the state? A few hundred dollars?
Two thousand.
Thousands.
Yeah.
Two thousand household is all the way out in the city, right? Two, three thousand houses?
We're a city of fourteen thousand.
We're not saying every city in the region.
You're still, I have six thousand.
The water system has, um, about forty-five hundred meters, I can tell you that much, and there's a lot of multifamily, so.
Now, remember, our, that's our utility, we have citizens in our city that aren't in our, our utility, so it's six thousand.
And that's not McCormick Woods, which is a separate water utility also.
So you're, you're still talking twelve, thirteen thousand? Because we have McCormick West Sound.
Yeah, no, it's, it's half of it. There may only be a household, not every, it's, it's six thousandish.
Four plus four.
We're a city of thirteen thousand, right, if you're not, if you're correct, there isn't a, there are four people in a household, so, and there's households of one.
Two point six, two point six is the average.
Do everything we can.
Yeah, to get the word out, educate our community, because we wanna continue the program, and if we can't bring this in, we're, we're gonna have to, to look at reducing it or, or abolishing it.
We'll get this, I said, well, but we can't get the flyers out, we put those out every year. On our webpage, just more followers.
And so is Facebook.
Facebook, yeah.
So, just bringing it up to date, we're gonna continue to, just like we've done, and, uh, push some information out, and then we've got this tag we're developing, so, um, I'll work with Mark. And, uh, he can work with the clerk's office to get that flyer on the webpage.
I'm, I'm trying to think outside, you know, the communication box and stuff, and, um, is it possible to contact, like, homeowners association, like, from McCormick Woods? I know the Ridge has a very active one, uh, and, and, you know, also we get that.
I don't, I don't have those contacts, but if you're a member of that association, will we do the Facebook page? It'd be very appropriate for you guys to share that with us.
But it gets on maybe two hundred people.
Our Facebook page, six, seven thousand gets, depending on.
Yeah, but what does it mean in terms of households and people? You know, you may be hitting the same people, so, I mean, it's a great way to get it out, but Facebook is not hitting everyone in the city. I used to hear people say that, "I didn't know this was happening," or something, "It's on Facebook for months, they've never seen it." And I know it's hard to reach, so, the, the tenants, we're gonna not pay them.
But maybe part of that will be maybe by the communications outreach that we're looking at. How are appliances treated?
You have to, uh, call and ask for it to be picked up and it's.
If you, there, in the flyer, it has a fee schedule for certain things that you prepay for when you have the tag. And then there's instructions on other things that can't be tampered on, four by four, right, you know, pile can't be, tires and paints and. So there's specific instructions that we have in flyers every year, and we improve that flyer every year. I just think the issue is that people don't seek out the flyer, they're just talking to the neighbor, and they just make assumptions.
When you say flyer, you're talking about, uh, a whole?
Is it eight and a half by nine, is it eight and a half, is it eight and a half by a little sheet that has all the information on it?
Which we'll put that on our webpage and push that on Facebook.
And we've done that, I mean, we've done Facebook, we've done our website. I'm sure the McCormick is already, because they follow, follow us, they're seeing it.
Some newspapers have picked it up, I read it in the paper.
So we're just gonna, we're trying to do a better job communicating, and for those that we still don't reach, and they put things out, because, as Mark said, their neighbor got the flyer, got the information, put their stuff out, and then Fred lives next door to me, and he says, "Oh, they're putting their stuff out." And he goes and grabs the old tires and the paint can, but he never saw the flyer, and he's putting stuff out that he shouldn't put out, so.
Or they put out the points that they're gonna prepay for.
Yeah.
So maybe the, um, coming back for it. Headline to the press release is gonna be a little attention grabbing, in this respect, like, you know, either they get tossed away, or you're, or there's something.
Okay, that was an easy one. So, all right, our, our guests for item number one have arrived. Uh, Jack and Steve are gonna come up and join us, and we'll talk a little bit about six forty Bay Street. No, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this.
Welcome.
You guys are going to, this is Steve Seago and Jack How, Jack How, uh, in Sound West Group, so. So, uh, you know, we've got, uh, about a month and a half until the purchase and sale, uh, just expires on, on, again, on, or comes, comes due on the six forty Bay Street purchase. And, uh, we've extended it, you know, two or at least two, if not three times, twice, and, uh, this last time we did it at the end of the year for, for ninety days. And we just kinda want, I, I wanted to get an update for the council of where we're at, what, you know, are the potential steps forward, and, you know, as we know, we did an RFP almost two years ago, uh, uh, Steve was the only one that submitted a proposal, I should, but there are drawings up there in my office, let me show everybody, sorry. Uh, and, uh, you know, it was for a, for a standalone building on six forty Bay Street. That has morphed significantly into a master plan project, possibly involves a community center, but, uh, funding from the Public Facilities District. And, uh, so that's kinda how we got to where we're at, and, you know, whether or not the document we have is the right tool, I'm, I'm not certain. Uh, and just wanna hear from, from you guys, and a little bit on what, what the next steps could look like from, from your side.
Well, thank, thank you, Mayor Conso, and, and let's just, just for a second, give kind of a reminder of how you got here and establish a quarter, where we are, what we've been doing. And we've been quite engaged and busy on this for a while, but we don't want to tell you all that, because we're busy doing what we do in the way for the next, you know, progress of the process. Um, and, and again, to, to, to Mayor Conso's point, uh, when the RFP was circulated, uh, a team responded that I was a part of, including Sound West Group, my company, Plodding Investment Partners, and BJC, Barbara Baddeley's company. And our objective was to begin, hopefully need impetus, it wasn't just a Hail Mary, but we wanted to make it a viable business venture, but to begin the process of attracting attention to redevelopment downtown Portrush. Uh, and that cycled up pretty significantly when we realized there were others interested with a similar agenda in redevelopment of our downtown, and wanted to join forces. And, um, that resulted in a lot of, of, uh, thinking about what that could be, and the timing, and as I heard from some of our partners, uh, and Kitsap Bank and others, that this was, you know, a moment in history when the stars were aligned, and they'd never seen us in, in that circumstance, uh, here in the last decades. And what they knew was, uh, the economics, the, you know, the opportunity zones, the interest in Portrush, uh, the vibrant economy, uh, the interest of, uh, competent development, and a local interest to Sound West Group. So with all that, we, we started working towards the idea of footprint, which was, you know, we've kind of mapped it, but it's the downtown from Bay Harbor, Frederick, both on sides of the water, and that hill, uh, just right there beyond. And Jack, who, let him speak a little bit more about this, but, uh, Jack has set an incredible amount of work successfully. He's now, if you look across the water, you see that, that yellow and blue crane, uh, waterfront, that's what he did every morning, gets up and goes and climbs the crane, but he's the, right? But he, he is the manager of that project, he's our, uh, Sound West Group's, uh, Development Director, and has been working successfully on that, Bainbridge Landing, you may have heard about that project, uh, with a very terminal Bainbridge. So with that, one of the things Jack did is brought in some talent that, um, has been very helpful, and is a company that you might have seen, because of some of the documents we've shared called TGLO, but that was a, a Seattle-based regional, national architecture design master plan company. And they created through what's called a SWOT analysis, it's, was it strengths, weaknesses?
Strengths.
Risks?
Opportunities.
Opportunities, okay, opportunities, risks, yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, that was the idea, if you had the footprint, and this was your objective, with your partners, where would the pieces go? And they came up with, you know, after, after different finalists versions of that, um, a finalist version, and as I've told anybody who's ever seen the final, you know, uh, master plan that we shared, this is a version of the universe that's never going to exist. What we mean by that is, you know, the iterations that take place as you move forward are about, as you get into the weeds, about practical pieces and partial buildings and the community event center. Um, it's not gonna end up exactly that way, you know, the number of unit counts for residential and parking units and, and commercial, you know, square footage, et cetera, pretty much end up in the same configuration. But the idea was to take into account the waterfront redevelopment opportunities, the shoreline redevelopment, restoration, environmental functions, open space amenities, et cetera. And that was kind of the footprint that they came up with. And a couple of things that were checkpoints for us to be able to jump off, if you will, the, the, the next stage of this, in terms of investment finances beyond the board footage, were, um, the, the confidence that the community event center was going to be funded. Thank you, City Portrush, and to Mayor, to taking the leadership on the commitment we received from the Public Facilities District for a large portion of that. It's a lot, a lot of work to be done there, but the door's open, that's really important. And the second checkpoint was our, you know, our partner, if you will, in this was Kitsap Bank, and part of this relationship we had with the PFD and, and selling, if you would, the, the funding was, this is a incredibly substantial, potential opportunity for downtown Portrush in terms of economic investment, hundred million dollars plus, and redevelopment, construction, and amenities, et cetera. And all these pieces that came together, the three components, the, the three legs of the stool, were the, the public piece, the community event center. Uh, and then the private pieces were the developer, Sound West Group, with the, uh, willingness to commit and invest, um, substantially in the residential, commercial, et cetera, components, and parking structures, and other amenities. And Kitsap Bank is kind of establishing their corporate headquarters in our, our community on that downtown. What I mean by that, if you all know, is that kind of the assemblage of all their administrative staff in one location. So we all committed to do that, and what we were waiting for was, the first piece was the Public Facilities District Fund, which last fall was committed to. And the next piece was the, um, Kitsap Bank, kind of planning the flag, and so we spent a lot of time, I was on the phone today, we have a meeting tomorrow with Kitsap Bank, today we met with Sound West Group, trying to get to the point in the shortest term possible of where is that going to go? And we, you know, have a SWOT's promotional office, that may not be where that ends up. Um, now we're getting into the design and functional process, and they have to take care of what's in their interest for the next fifty years, not just what we'd like to see happen. And so where we are is trying to make that all work and come together, and in the process, we've been working to assemble, you know, properties at six forty Bay Street, we have closed on, I, I don't wanna go into the details right now, but we have, taken possession, ownership of a property in another in process, um, and then Kitsap Bank has this portion here, and if they choose not to put, um, their building here on a, where their, their parking lot is, then they're gonna, throw that into the process, I mean, their goal is to make this a successful venture as a, a, a development for master plan for downtown Portrush. And we talked about that more detail, you have to come in terms of where do they end up locating, uh, in this mix, whatever isn't where they're going to be, how do we make that part of the official phase of the project? So that's kind of status report, uh, and Jack, you can speak to, you know, the, the, the financials too, and not that this is Maritton or Marina Square, but when that project started, you know, we had a bar, and there was a, uh, an investment component of about fifty-four million dollars for the opportunity fund that we established to do that. How close are we to having that funded since May?
Yeah, well, I also wanted to say, I tried to really fortunate to have been involved in two other master plans in two other communities, very similar in status. One was at the South End of Lake Washington, now it's a development called Southport, I don't know if you've heard of that, but, um, first, it, it was a, uh, huge power plant that, that was abandoned, and it was at Brownfield, and contaminated. And, uh, we master planned that, uh, now it's fully built out, some, you know, fifteen years later, a hundred percent with office, hotel, multi-family, the potential prosperity connection to, uh, the district. The other one was, um, uh, Wantita Village in Kirkland on Lake Washington, and, uh, same thing was abandoned, uh, strip malls and parking lots and, uh, overutilized. And, uh, the biggest takeaway is that mixed, like, uh, multifamily and mixed-use, high-density multifamily kind of leads the way. If you can get high-density multifamily in the midst right away, that then becomes, uh, people, uh, that live on the site, they're, they spend money, they allow the mixed-use component to exist. Uh, the anchor tenant by Kitsap Bank will also drive people to live across where they work, or in where they work. And, uh, the multifamily is kind of the, kind of the first domino to fall, if you can get that to work. Um, and we think this is just a fantastic site, because it has the ingredients of jobs, shipyard, shipyard expansion, shipyard work that, uh, is, uh, increasing in federal investment and transportation, prosperity, uh, uh, transport, uh, bus, uh, linkage, and, uh, so we're really bullish on this location as kind of a repeat of some of these other projects we've done in, uh, somewhere to Marina Square, and has the same, those same compounds that the, multifamily, the transportation actually made it, made it, made it feasible. So, um.
You know, well, you know, and, and I guess to the point, that's just kind of, you know, it's a global view of where we've been, and we've fertilized this before, but where we are now in terms of the decision-making processes, is, you know, we now feel like, based upon what we think Kitsap Bank wants to do, what we think will fit, we're more confident than, than ever that we're able to expedite the first phase of this project, once we've got that commitment. Um, and I can't speak for, for, for them, and frankly, if I could, um, do that, but I know there was a building meeting last week where they kind of made some decisions about that, and, um, you know, not publicly yet, but. The good news is, all those players are still at the table, all the components are still there, capital, um, is it, uh, interest of capital is, is still viable in terms of an opportunity fund, or would it be helpful?
Yeah, so maybe there's, yeah, so, uh, it's an opportunity zone, which, uh, attracts, uh, capital gains, capital, and to defer taxes. And it is a, you know, a very good tool to attract, attracting equity. And so, um, the Sound West Group actually has an affiliated company called Sound West Realty Capital, uh, that is nationwide racing funds for Marina Square, other projects in this. And, um, the opportunity zone regulations have been kind of, uh, in question, hit and miss, until just recently, the Commerce Department came out with the definitive, okay, here's the rules of the game. And now suddenly, just literally within the past three months, we've had, uh, inquiries, capital flowing, and we've raised, you know, close to fifty million dollars from Marina Square, opportunity zone funds. And so we're gonna, our intent is to replicate that for, for this project. And, hey, just today, we got an email of, you know, a, a New York fund wants, you know, we got, yeah, seven million we gotta deploy right now, you know?
Gonna find a home for, so you guys have a home for us, but, but, but to circle back to the, the question at hand, which is, you know, what about six forty, what about our, our purchase and sale, we're gonna put this status, one of the next steps? And we've had some conversations, you know, Mayor Conso, and we've had some conversations, and there's, there's a similar opportunity that maybe is applicable, but we'd like your input, we'll kind of explain that, see if that's worth pursuing or discussing in more detail. Um, but the, the, I would say that the example was, and Jack has been as better than I, but it was at Marina Square, and I remember when we first closed on that property, um, and we were in partnership with Port Maritton, this public property. Uh, we purchased it, but we had some cabbies, they had some needs, parking was one of them. Um, and so, uh, we, uh, arranged and negotiated the outcome, um, that resulted in some benefits for parking. Uh, and one of the losses, you know, we could close the property, pass cash on to the city, perform per our agreement, and then if we don't perform, we have to give the property back, or all the terms we described earlier. Um, one of the options would be similar to, uh, that project was, you know, dedicate some of the parking that we're developing as part of this project, um, as, as value to, uh, depraise value of that property, to be applicable towards a placeholder for that much in parking. So that there's not necessarily cash involved, but there's value, equal value to whatever it is that we create for parking that the city may have an interest in. That may not be in your wheelhouse, that might be something that is not of interest to you. We do know that, that parking, whatever happens with Kitsap Bank, the parking needs for the residential, commercial, retail components, and Kitsap Bank's own needs, and what we think is the public's potential need that we could provide, um, we could stand that up as a, as a reasonable parking, uh, solution, fortunately.
We definitely have a parking need, and we've got a dozen or more employees on a daily basis, shopping cars, around the same mall. Uh, how far away are you though, to, to, you know, possibly trade that piece of property for our future parking need? But we need to, one, about, reevaluate the value of that piece of property, and how far out are you from knowing what your parking stalls are gonna cost, and, and for that structure? I mean, obviously, the structure, the, uh, the south side of the street is the taller, where you can build taller, and that's likely where that structure's gonna be, but you're not designing any, I mean, you're still in the planning stages. You're not in the design stages, until you get to the design stage, you're not gonna know what your costs are, those parking.
But we have a pretty good idea, actually.
Okay?
So, this is, uh, very similar to Marina Square, in that it's on a hill, you, it's, it's concrete structured parking, you shore three sides, uh, you're shoring them, uh, to retain the hillside, and then you pour concrete against it. And, you know, part of it daylights on, you know, the, uh, Bay Street side, and partial, um, on the, uh, Frederick and Geiger, but, and then the, into the hill is probably three stories of parking deck. That's kind of what we planned, so you enter on Geiger, Bay, Bay, and Frederick, probably into that garage, so there's no internal ramps or whatever, because you take.
You can't, you can't enter from Bay, but you, all the others are off.
Yeah.
A lot of the, yeah.
How many spaces are you talking about, Rob?
Uh, I, which, that's a plan is, it's.
Was two hundred, so, something for the, so there, the total was about four hundred some parking, you parking stalls, that includes some for the, the front side of the, from the waterfront side? If I remember right, I, I don't have that here, but it's two hundred and sixty-two or forty-two, if I remember correctly.
So, structured, short parking is extraordinarily expensive. It isn't cheap, it's probably about forty to forty-two thousand dollars a stall, that's what it's costing us at, at Marina Square. And it, it's basically, it is not a moneymaker, it's a break-even, it's an evil necessity for mixed, mixed-use projects. So we do try to make it revenue neutral, just so it pays for itself, and it covers, uh, debt service. Um, and that being said, also, the here and now of the automobile, the parking, is completely different than what it may be in the future. So, um, you know, future-proofing these parking structures is something we're interested in. Um, but right now, for, just taking residential, for example, we have, probably the, the market is, uh, one point two five to one point five stalls per dwelling unit. So you think that, well, you know, why do people need cars? They've got transportation, and boats, and all this kind of stuff. Well, they may park their Subaru in the stall five days a week, with a ski rack and the, you know, a paddleboard rack or whatever, and then on the weekends, they go out and do their stuff, and they're, you know, uh, rent commuters five days a week, but their car users may install, put their car, and, you know, a couple that, two, yeah, professionals, often have, you know, a husband and wife or a couple, have two cars. And so, um, the here and now is that they need that parking, usually about one, one and a half per dwelling unit. Um, and then there's, you know, uh, city ordinances and code requirements for commercial and other uses that dictate how your stalls should be. Um, the good news is that, um, parking systems and parking software has become extremely, um, sophisticated, with, um, RFID chips and, um, uh, parking, smart parking passes, and even tickets that you take out of the ticket machine, track when you come and go, and where you are inside the parking structure. So what we're doing is, on Marina Square, with the exception of the residential, which needs to be very secure parking, uh, because of, you know, whatever, single limit people.
Groceries?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's super secure, so that is not open to the public, and, and, um, but commercial parking and mixed-use parking, um, is, uh, very sophisticated in tracking, uh, when cars come and go, and how you collect revenue, and. For example, we have, uh, in Marina Square, the port purchased seventy-five stalls, and the port revenue, and the seventy-five stalls can be anywhere in the three hundred and eighty-two stall parking. And the software and parking systems know, when you hit number seventy-five. And the software and parking systems know when you hit number seventy-five, because there's, you know, two hundred voters or whatever there that, that, that come and go. That, you have an option, you know, you have to pay or, you know, go and find a parking. So there is a, you know, a right to use component and maybe that could be applicable here with the, with the city and the community center to where there's, you know, you press a button, it's like community event. Little computer screen in the parking, you know, today's event is the X, Y, Z, you know, press the button, gun in and, you know, it, it's tracked. Now it's paid for, whether, you know, the city or the community center were to buy X amount of parking stalls. It's, it's all trackable on the software.
And the benefit is, and Jack and I talked about this today, that was really interesting, is it's not like airlines who oversell receipts, but you can essentially oversell the number of stalls that people use in a day because of the pattern of when they use them. So certain users are night users that have a different use than people who are the day users or business day. So you can literally, because instead of assigning one stall for one use and then come there at night and nobody's ever parking these twelve, fifteen, twenty stalls because, you know, they're for whoever in the daytime, they're applicable, they're accessible in the evening for the next use. And that really creates value overall for everybody.
We have a parking consultant and operator and they have, I believe it was eighteen percent. So if you have a hundred stalls, they'll sell a hundred and eighteen stalls. So because the ferry commuter comes and goes early, hotel user comes in at night and they have this diversity factor to where they sell a stall more than once during the day.
So that's just some of the ideas of what we're working on parking. And, and nothing about what is kind of me finalizing now the locations of pieces really changes. But I think this, you know, we think, I think our key does Kitsap Bank agrees as well as that first phase, which is we call the, you know, the hillside, as you well, the south side of the base street, is probably the simplest, you know, thing is to start.
Quickest to market.
Turn around and have, develop, construct it with less complication. In some ways, if Kitsap Bank opts not to be there, it, it makes it even more streamlined of a process to start that project and then support them to get their project built. But whatever happens, everything that isn't them will be part of this project as an extra money. And then finally, the community event center ends up and the event is kind of still, you know, unknown as we sort it out by the city, you know, so.
Well, back, back to the now, parking some property is probably five parking stalls.
Before, before we have.
If, if we were gonna have that conversation.
Before we have that conversation, and I appreciate everything that they told us. And the primary thing I heard is when we entered in to the purchase and sale agreement, was it July or something a couple of years ago? Yeah, we were looking at six forty Bay Street as one structure. And it has morphed into this master plan. And some of the criteria we had in that purchase and sale agreement indicated, what I'm remembering is that we weren't gonna sell until we had permit ready plans. And there were dollar amounts involved, there are amenities and values put to the amenities. And what I'm hearing now is quite a deviation from that original purchase and sale agreement. So my question to the council is, do we want to start over? Do we want to look at that purchase and sale agreement and see how it can be modified to meet needs now? But it seems to me that what they're talking about is if, if we were to close on this property before it expires the end of March, they're gonna need to have permit ready plans for us. Which isn't realistic.
But I can ask, if we don't have any intention of trying to close a hotel, we do have permit ready plans. The idea is to have a, a, an agreement, purchase and sale agreement that assigns the property with stipulations that if that, if this is completed and it's incorporated into this, this is one half, if it's not the only half, we can still do a, a purchase with capital at that closing.
Right, what I'm saying is, do we wanna entertain looking at the actual document, the legal document we have? And do we wanna modify it at all? That, that's what I'm, you know, to me, where's the beginning point? The beginning point is not, are we gonna be compensated with parking stalls? The, the beginning point is, how do we value the property? How do we want to move forward with this sale of the property?
I think we've got to, it's, you know, you and I are working making appraisals out of lives.
Right.
And, and we can even do a full appraisal, we can mark a brokerage price opinion. And it's been long enough time that we owe it, the taxpayers would say, if we're hurt here, to step back and have that, that, that value reevaluated. But I wouldn't recommend we spend that money on having that valuation done until, you know, what's, the, so, you know, what our path forward is. If we appraise this thing tomorrow and this process takes another six, nine, god forbid, twelve months, are we spending another five thousand dollars on another appraisal? So I think we need to know what the path is and, and some executable deadlines to that path. And then craft a document and, and, and Charlie just got a stack today of all of this stuff. And we, and so, you know, she's gonna need to take a look at that. And whether or not we're comfortable modifying this, this document or what that.
I guess I, I would have a question on just how much flexibility do we have? I mean, we went through a process to start this. Can we just, whatever we wanna do, we can modify change. I'm glad you're looking at the, the documents that brought us to this point so that you can let us know what, what are our abilities?
No, that brings up a great, great point because at the time, you know, there was a group engagement and we had one group come forward. So if we did modify it this time, we have to go back and allow, you know, so I don't want to answer all those questions. There's certainly no bond to the, the, what this, you know, group they're working so hard on, but just make sure. And I don't know that we want to be in a position to add complexity to a complex issue, issue either. You know, this could be a simple transaction and there's one less contingency on everybody, that might be something that's desirable. It has changed a lot, we understand why, so I think it's good that we have these conversations to figure out what the next step is. We got ahead of it so we're not, you know, last council meeting in March feeling the pressure to take some sort of action that hasn't been thought out by us or, you know, both sides.
And, and that's really what I'm trying to avoid here. Five weeks from tonight, we're gonna be needing to take some sort of action and be, try to be proactive here and figure out what the potential solutions are.
Can I add something to that, Peter? What, I mean, we've spent.
Much progress.
Ahead, it's more than the purchase.
Yeah, already so far. And, and, and my, my issue is that I am not gonna represent the city council or the mayor, who drew their position on this originally. But I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's memorialized in the documents or just part of the discussion. But the, the impetus for the idea of this empty lot being made available to a development interest to do something with it was this, to infuse energy and development in a downtown on a lot that was not being used to its highest and best use. But more, but to, to a degree as important was to not sell it to somebody, who would just warehouse it and sit on it for twenty years. And so that's, that's how this all evolved, the cadillons around that were, okay, if you're gonna propose a purchase price for this and agree to that, show us something, what are you gonna do and what are you gonna do it? And how are you gonna perform this scheme, not just promises, but to, to council member Ashton's point, you know, put the rubber on the rope, what are you gonna do? And so, you know, the, the, the good, bad news is, again, to my point earlier, this process precipitated a lot of energy and kind of jumped to where you had a master plan before we got a chance to really start the project. And it kind of complicated things a bit, but I just wanna remind us that that's kind of where we started. So with that spirit in mind, how do we start a project?
That, that was probably one of the biggest driving forces to this process and accepting less than fair market value for, for that piece of property was we didn't want it held in a land bank that, you know, and I don't know. Of course, desires have changed, but I don't know, my asset, I, I wanna see something happen with this piece of property. I, I hear Councilmember Chardee's concern, how do we make this simpler? Is it just a straight sale? But how do we protect that desire to get activity so this doesn't sit for another, who knows how long? You know, I'm, I'm looking for solutions, I guess that's what I.
Isn't the sentence just extend it, we're done for three to six months?
It could be, you know, it could be a, a, a likely scenario where we're just extending it till we, but I, I hate to keep extending this and not figuring out what the end game is and solution.
I, I, and I guess that's what comes first, you know, the cart or the horse? Because originally it was, everybody said it, you know, is standalone. And now it's, it's morphing, so how do all the pieces fit in or do we still treat it as a standalone? Because if we look at the whole project, I, I could see it taking several years before we start seeing everything get developed. If we treat it as a standalone and with the expectation that something's gonna be built next year, that puts a different flavor on how we look at it, like Fred was just talking about.
So what's realistic? And one, one of our classes, I mean, always has been, to me, it's been the capital to closing this property for whatever the legitimate value of this property is, 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 is essential for the project now that it's part of the sandwich. But it's critical, if we don't get that property, then the project's not gonna happen because you don't have that economy of scale of parking, et cetera.
Economy of scale, it's, it has a standalone in this department.
So, not now, so with that said, you know, to me, it's not about the capital. Well, the betta, the question is, what security, certainty, stipulations, conditions satisfy the city council that if we close on the property or have a contract that says we'll close as soon as we get to that checkpoint, to council member Ashton's point, we're, we're comfortable with that too. I mean, we're not, we're kind of committed here to throw a wrench in this with the idea of the parking solution, but just to give you an example of similar public partnership. And so if it was a condition of closing, and we, let's just say we closed at the end of March and it was for X dollars and it, and it was an acceptable number, there would be a condition on that closing or title that within, you know, twenty-four months, if there wasn't something, whatever that agreement was, the city could take back that property for the price that we paid for it. Or, you know, something, I, you, you, whatever, we are not trying to get a good deal here, we're trying to put together the parcel in a way that makes us fun.
I think realistically, if, I, I, I sense from conversations I've had, there's a desire to have a free appraisal. I don't know that I can get it, I can, I know in the private sector, I can get an appraisal done four weeks or five weeks, probably. In government, I've gotta procure that appraisal. So it's just life we live and, here in City Hall. So I've got a process I've gotta go through to hire that appraiser and then get that body of work done. And the real estate market is still pretty good, so appraisers would be the kind of thing. So I think there's a desire, I think we, we need to appraise it and realistically, we're not gonna have, if there's a desire to sell. And we can always take, the, the money that we get, it has to go into our refund, that's where it came from. And if something gets built, I'm gonna be raising my hand, you know, to acquire some parking stalls as we need it for City Hall. I was just thrown, I get, you know, spaghetti at the wall with trading it, you know, or, or, because I'm trying to also satisfy some desires to have control, you know, some control of this process so that we get desired outcomes. But it's, your guy ultimately, you guys have to make this decision. Is there, do, do we wanna sell it? Do we wanna start over? Do we want to, I think we need to extend this and appraise this for whatever, extend, have an appraisal and extend it for any process.
How soon will we have more information on what Kitsap Bank's plans will be?
But, but I mean, I'm even in Marv again and, and this is, this isn't a negative thing. This is a very constructive process, which is now we're really getting down to the details. And they have an obligation to their board and their shareholders to make the right choice. And so I, I defer to them, we can't really speak to that. But I can tell you tomorrow, my discussion is gonna say, hey, that's some council talk last night, but council member Lucherelli, when are we gonna know? You know, so.
I'm down there at least weekly, if not twice a week, having conversations. And what I've gotten, so the, in this master plan, what I think, one of the stumbling points to this was their desire to own their real estate. And that was gonna be challenging to do when they're part of a bigger, you know, a bigger structure.
Could be a commercial condominium.
Yeah, maybe just.
One of the main construction.
And so what they've shared with me is they are committed to having the corporate headquarters in Fort Orchard. What that looks like in a master plan, they recognize that they need to work with a developer, I hope it's Sound West Group, to start an additional master bank planning process like this to figure out where that location is. And I have encouraged them, I said, we just started a two hundred thousand dollar process with the same consultant, did this body of work. I said, gosh, I wish you would get going on that and figure that out. So I'm asking a question all the time. And like, all I'm, all I got to this point is we are committed to Fort Orchard, to building our corporate headquarters in Fort Orchard.
But can I give you, there is a finish line, because there's a few zones. And it's because of the stipulations that we're a part of this joint effort, which was community event center, the construction development and the bank corporate headquarters. And they're each relying upon one upon the other. And Kitsap Bank's position was, until we have confidence that there's gonna be a community event center, just the idea of redevelopment doesn't quite make the work for us. Now, there is a, there is a fuse on this community event center public process. And that's not gonna go on for, for years. The, the PFPs and the mayor and the city are involved in the next steps in that. So the, the, the bank recognizes, Kitsap Bank recognizes, I can't speak for the rest of them, they recognize that if we all live this sort of out soon, we may lose this opportunity for this, this wonderful event.
We don't see that sort of, sort of out in the next six, twelve months, we'll, we'll likely. Yeah, because I know not, I, I'm not comfortable at all with a community center that doesn't involve a master plan.
It's not being sold to them.
Yeah, that's what, you know, and that's the only thing, this Kitsap Bank's headquarters all by itself doesn't meet the spirit of the twelve million dollars that we got. And, and it just doesn't work.
Are you waiting on them? Are they? Who?
No, but their commitment, their commitment is.
It was just, it was just, now it's, okay, where are you gonna be? Can we, we wanna, we wanna build the train station around the hotel. Where, where is the hotel gonna be? And so that matters because that is a kind of central, you know, kind of a, as, as Jack said earlier, kind of anchor location. And, and, and to, to the point is that if it's not there, which we first have, we have plenty of options. It makes it a lot simpler on the south side, but it also then gives them a chance to decide whether to leave wherever they are going to be. It's gonna be part of this master plan.
They own what, this lot here, part of over there?
They own part of this, this DNR here, they own this and the drive through, again, this is DNR and the city and Ryder Place here. And then it goes up to their spot here and this is currently in, in separate ownership.
Fort Rimmer's owns some property there too, right?
And that are our business property.
Just DNR businesses.
Oh, DNR businesses.
And this is all, and then they.
You'll dig that.
This process, yeah, so, but, you know, my question today was, what's the month of purchase and sale for that, if that's not ours? Maybe just so we can get all these pieces in process to get a.
So there's eleven parcels involved in the whole thing, so this kind of.
What, which bank, the banks probably got sixty percent of the money?
Oh, yeah.
Well, no, I just, and I'm just trying to find a separate way forward. Maybe what we need to do is to figure out is our existing document, can we modify it, right? With everything that we put in there, I mean, this has gotten to a point where it's a much more exciting project. I mean, we all agree that, I just want to continue to see that, to understand all that. But, you know, if, I think where this started is we had an entity that owned a piece of property. We were gonna be willing to sell it if there was a willing buyer. We put contingencies on it to some extent, right? This is a wonderful city to go. So what can we do to retreat out of this? And if we can find how we might be able to back away from that, then maybe go back to the potential buyer to see what terms might be, make sense now that you know what we know now.
My question to that, Ben, and to the attorney, is if we retreat back, do we have to open up another process?
That's my original question, is legally, what can we do?
Right.
I don't want this thing challenged and thrown out because...
He might want to, he might need to slide up here and bring his microphone. And in reality too, so is a week from now, give you enough time to report back to us, what you think are, to answer these questions that you're in here tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. I think I can come to you with rules of engagement. I can't, you're going to hear this from me over and over again, I can't speak to legal risk of any decision you make in a public setting. But I'm happy to bring sort of a framework of rules of engagement, to use that term, at your meeting on Tuesday. I think that's reasonable. Just glancing through the documents, I think you've granted yourselves wide latitude, both in your request for proposals and in the purchase and sale agreement that was executed by both parties. The purchase and sale agreement is, hinges on the drafting and the execution of a development agreement. And that's essentially the only performance that's required of them. There's one provision in there that requires that they actually break ground within 30 months, which I think they're now butting up against, based on a signature date of July 18.
Was it 30, was it 30 months from the execution, 30 months from the...
Closing, it's execution.
It is.
Yeah, so we would have to modify that one. But again, I can't speak to sort of the general rules of engagement tonight, but I'm happy to do that at our next meeting.
And we, just some ideas that were thrown out here, if we, you know, got through these hurdles, and the desire was to sell it, I heard an idea of putting contingencies on that title, is that difficult to execute? And would you, I'd like some discussions about that.
Yeah.
Is this, since this is a real estate matter, should we be having an executive session about this potentially, or part of this discussion next week?
I think, I think we can, yes. I think, and not just that it's a real estate, but some of the questions that have been raised is what sort of liability do we have if we decide to go forward with this developer as opposed to reissuing an RFP? So yeah, this is legal risk that we can talk about in an exec session, yeah.
So, do you plan for that next Tuesday?
I could tell you from my perspective is, I think whatever, as long as legally, we can move this in forward. I don't care if we close on it tomorrow, or we close on it in four to four months. When we close on it, I think you raise a very valid point that we need to have a current estimate or appraisal on the property so that, you know, everybody is, we're treating everyone fairly, and we're watching the interest of the citizens of Fort Orchard. But whether we close tomorrow or not personally, I don't think that that's an issue. I'm supportive about this effort. I can certainly understand the challenges of, you've got a moving target in Kitsap Bank, where will they finally anchor? Then you can plan around that, but until they decide where they're going to be, it's a challenge. You know, we don't, you know, I don't want this to go on forever. I think we need to put, or I can give you 12 months or 18 months, two years, whatever, that this thing's going to be closed on. But I'm, I'm not going to lose any sleep if we don't close on this in 30 days and 90 days, as long as we get this project moving forward. And then doing horse trading for parking or whatever we do, I mean, that's another.
Settle costs.
Almost immaterial, I mean, where we're all scope of projects.
Right, my feeling supports what John said. I don't care if we close the end of March, or if we close two years from now. I'm not excited about closing and then having an option of buying the property back.
Yeah.
I don't see us as, you know, wanting to execute that sort of stuff. I would prefer to keep it simple.
My, my goal is to get something done on that property.
Correct.
That's the goal, whether it's this master plan or something else. But whether it happens tomorrow or six months from now, I don't...
My only time, you know, issue is I told my, my wife, we started this two years ago, that we hadn't wrapped up in two years, we retire, so that didn't happen, so now I prefer to...
Sounds like a personal problem.
Yeah, we started this, our attorney and he knew going in, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's not the end or, you know, the beginning of the end, it's the end of the beginning to get to this, this spot, right? And that's going to take years to fully develop the phased out master plan process. And we just want to get to the end of the beginnings, we can start the process.
And with that, perhaps we could have some language in there that the sales price would be the appraised value that was, that was done within X number of days of the potential sale.
Totally would be so many days after, Brett's idea.
Yeah, one idea, so we're going to be engaging a, an appraisal, an appraiser anyway, and maybe to value each piece of property as is, and then as entitled, and it's part of our financing package, and we'll probably use a company called the O'Connor Group, they're a third party independent, you know, banks rely on them. We could just, you know, have them, you know, appraise all the pieces, and then including the city piece, just, you know, prior to closing. And that way you don't have to go through the public process, it's a third party.
We don't have to go through, yeah.
Unfortunately.
I think we need a bar.
There's always, yeah.
Appreciate the idea.
So, yeah. The question, my main question, Jack, is this, is it having an agreement that you haven't closed on it, but it's got these triggers? And we're going to have a requirement with, that we need to have an appraisal prior to closing? Does that put any restraints on, on your assemblage of this property if you've got an agreement that's got an executable date, that's got two years, you know, we give you two years, but you don't own it until you, we get to a deliverable value?
I think that would be absolutely fine, because I don't think the swing would be that dramatic.
It wouldn't be, the only, you know, as we, so we've assembled partners, investors who are part of, you know, this, this, the upcoming fund process. And the way you, the way you do that and make the case about why they should invest is, here's the certainty, here's the value of these properties today, and we're going to try to close on these properties, assemble them, and then create a project that has some return hopefully, so you can end up, you know, investing and making some money. And to assemble the properties with one of them saying, well, we don't know for sure yet with that prices, I can put a price on the rest of them, is an unknown. But to Jack's point, it's not a piece of property that's likely to exhibit some huge swing in value beyond where it starts today over the next couple of years.
We'll throw our own contingency on it.
Yeah.
I, I think you could develop it, you know, to a low, which we don't, I don't think we desire to do, you could build, it's parking. And that's what we, you learn through this process is, if you try to go five stories on that site, to park it is, is cost prohibitive. So some, it has value.
Well, parking will drive the density. If you can fit 14 stalls, you get 14 units.
Yeah. So it's, so it's market value isn't probably, as a standalone, isn't going to swing.
Right, exactly. As a individual property, the appraised value is not going to become more likely because the rest of the project happening is standalone.
So I think we've got...
I guess the only thing that...
I just had, I concur with what you said earlier, and the theme of what we're designing as well. Just one observation is, is heading to a pathway of parking spaces preclude other alternative development scenarios when you've got more of the downtown locked up.
Say that again, Scott.
So, so you're looking at a parking structure, perhaps, but, but in the grand scheme of things is, what if that's not one of the alternatives that you want to go with? And maybe you want to look at a different parking structure somewhere else? And so now, are you locked into that development scenario when you really don't know what the whole development's going to look like yet?
I, I think we're pretty confident that this is going to be phased in, and we have to start with a piece and not try to do everything at the same, in terms of the design process. I think we're, we're pretty confident, and I don't know, Jack, you can corroborate that, is that we would do this.
Residential over.
I might even do it in pieces, so you might even do parking garages phase one, with residential as a piece of it, and then phase two is this piece is residential, commercial. I mean, in other words, you might do it, but the reality is, you're not going to change your strategy for this because of other things that may happen somewhere at this point. I just don't see that as the liable reality, I don't know.
No, especially with residential, parking needs to be, is totally attached to where you can get out of your car, get your groceries, go up the elevator. You know, having an off-site or something just doesn't work.
My only comment was going to be, just to clarify my position, whether we close on it two years or whatever, I think whenever we do close, I would still like to see a condition that it's going to close with development. So that we know that whatever it does close, it's going to result in a improvement at that point.
To the original language, which included that, you mentioned that 30-month performance, or whatever we can negotiate and agree to so that it closes, and then there's a performance obligation, just conditionally.
I just, I didn't want that to be lost in our conversation, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
You know, and again, this is, this idea, and the whole, the spirit of this idea, and the interest that's caused, not just in terms of investors who are saying, you know, this, where's this Porsche, where, you know, what's happening over there? But it's also, you know, created some interest in, you know, the, the whole city in terms of viability of why it's a good place to invest, and the residential absorption still is a legitimate market strength for, for investors in residential. So, it's, even if we were trying, we started something regarding this, of what the outcome is, but it's on a good path right now, I think.
Well, as we had hoped, that, you know, this has grown into much more than what we originally talked about. But my expectation is this is going to grow to other parts of the city as well, and this is kind of the catalyst that's going to get this moving.
Well, we are one hour into a twenty-minute discussion item.
Welcome to our world.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
All right, Noah, where did you go? You are up. Are you using screen?
Yes.
You've got five minutes.
I missed. Uh, look, we can do it.
I withdraw the discussion, the finance committee regarde all of this and we concur with you. So, does that help you any?
I don't think that's...
I think you're done.
I don't think that's what he's showing. I can put on this question, it's extremely better than this. Okay. I don't think we're doing an asset management first.
No, we'll do that second.
Yeah, so everyone should have, I gave a handout of a budget report and our cash investment report. So I was asked to bring some preliminary financials for 2019. We have until May 29th to close our financial books, so I don't, these are all preliminary numbers. I made sure, my staff made sure I had said that multiple times, preliminary numbers subject to change, but I don't expect them to change significantly between now and May, between when we file our report with the state office. Brandy, any chance I could use that mouse? Or do you have a mouse?
I have one, but I don't think it's, um...
It's not going to reach?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's okay.
I have to go over there to chop it out.
Do you?
Well, I was going to try to scroll down, but that's okay.
Well, you know what, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Looks very nice though. Well, you have the budget report, and I'll give you the high-level overview. You also have the executive summary and the staff report. All in all, it's all really good news as far as the current financial state of the city. For revenues, we exceeded our budgeted amount by nearly a million dollars, almost 9.55% higher revenues were collected in 2019 than we budgeted. Again, this for the current expense fund. And then our expenses were approximately $2.4 million less than we budgeted, or around 18% less than we budgeted. Now, the key caveat with that expenditure figure is that because we're on a biannual budget, we move all expenditure authority to the 2020 fiscal year. I know a number of these expenses will go forward in 2020 because they're transfers, removing money from general fund to our stabilization fund, removing money from our general fund to our E and R fund. So about $900,000 of those unexecuted transfers will occur in 2020. So sometimes it's a little misleading when you look at budget to actuals, whether those expenses will occur.
So Mr. Dorsey has a number of projects underway too, that will expend some of that money?
Yes. The Public Works Department is working very hard, and will continue to work really hard in 2020. So again, that's why we operate on a biannual budget, so we don't have to do a whole full-blown new budget every year, but I can move the expenditure authority and we can continue to operate, provide the services. The other funds we want to look at is the water, sewer, and storm utilities, all performing really well. Our water operating fund exceeded our budget by about 4%, or about $189,000. Again, for the water operating fund expenditures were less than budgeted. Again, a significant portion of that are transfers that I have not executed yet but intend to execute in 2020, as our capital projects move forward. A number of those transfers are operating revenues towards the well projects. Again, we don't make those transfers until the money is needed in the capital fund. But again, Public Works is working really hard, and we expect that to go forward in 2020. The same is true with the sewer fund as well. We have Marina Station Two going forward, excuse me, McCormick Sewer Lift Station Number Two, and we have the Marina Pump Station. So there are a number of transfers that we intend to execute in 2020, but we did not execute those in 2019. But again, the sewer operating revenue was about 3% higher than we budgeted. So again, all real good indicators of strong financial health for the city. When we looked at our actual fund balance, our cash and investments, again, because our revenues were strong and our expenses were less than budgeted, you'll see in the last page of the report, our cash and investment, that all our funds have really healthy fund balances, again, which is great news for 2019. We will continue to put out a monthly financial report. We haven't done that yet for January because we kind of want to continue to tighten up the numbers, make sure we felt comfortable before we put out the annual financial report, and then we'll get back to monthly reporting to council, again, beginning in the next couple of weeks. So with that, I'll just take a minute to take a pause and see if any of the council members have any questions on financials specifically.
I would just make the comment that earlier, the finance committee did me, went through this very presentation, which also...
And then, I took a little deeper dive into specific accounts.
And then also, for email out to everybody in part of the world.
And I would add, very pleased with our current account balances and performances, so we're doing well.
Is lodging tax on here?
It is, it's Fund 107. And we did discuss the naming convention of the lodging tax fund.
I can remember just call it lodging tax.
You have seven of those, a question, okay.
Yeah. The other financial topic that came up in the finance committee is sales tax revenue. And again, for 2019, we realized about 5% growth in actual sales tax revenue over 2018. So again, strong sales tax revenue, as well as our REIT revenue has been really strong for 2019. Our REIT revenue is about 75% of our biannual budget. So beginning of the year, that's great news for the REIT Fund 109 and future capital The other item that is associated with this report back is, during the council retreat, we talked about several items that we want to pursue looking at funding in 2020. And the mayor's comment only was, go look at the financials for 2019, and come back and demonstrate that we can afford to do these, and then let's talk about it with council. So a couple of the items we want to talk about was the Laserfish. Again, that was the software that can improve our workflow management as well as our records management. This is a product that will impact every department in how we maintain our records. It will also enable us to go paperless, and allow us to streamline our accounts payable process. There's also a number of other great features that I see this product doing for us as far as getting to electronic format for forms, electronic documents for our external customers to access the city on the website. And then it will improve our workflow process between departments. For example, I use advanced travel. So when an employee goes for training, they're required to seek approval in advance of going to the training. And per policy, we offer the ability to apply for advanced payments per DM and for your hotel cost, so that an employee, when they go on training, they walk out the door with a check to pay for all their travel expenses. Currently, the process is quite cumbersome, because they have to fill out an advanced travel form, get it reviewed by their department director, then... travel form, get it reviewed by their department director, then they have to come up to Finance Department and see if they filled it out correctly, which in turn we'd usually send them back because they did not, and then they have to provide more documentation and come back. This literally happens six or seven times every single advanced travel training.
The idea of finance comes into my office at least once and complains about the process. And I can't, I can't believe they haven't abolished this.
So, this is just one example where I can see an electronic workflow where an employee fills out the form electronically, attaches all their documentation at that point, and is automatically transmitted to my department. It's tracked, managed, and monitored in a single flow system that will benefit multiple departments. And that's just a, a small example because it gets really loud when people get frustrated when having to run back and forth. But there are numerous examples that we're continuing to write down as things we want to implement once we get Laserfish onboard and can start using the e-forms and workflow management. The benefit of Laserfish impacting every department is that it's going to impact all our funds. So the cost is going to be shared amongst all the enterprise funds and our general fund, and when we parcel out, it becomes really low dollars. We expect the, the system to cost about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year one, and thereafter about fifteen thousand dollars per year to renew the licenses and services. The other topic we want to talk about was city hall security improvements. If you recall, during the mid-biennial review, the council authorized staff to go forward and seek security improvements to the building. We looked at doing some door improvements, some card readers for the doors as well as cameras. We put together a team to put together an RFP, we put it out in the street, and found out that it was a lot more expensive than we had budgeted at seventy-five thousand dollars. So the management team got back together, scaled back the project to fit within the intent and the scope of the budget, and now we have a much more focused security effort on doors only. We're not going to do security cameras, but it's now up to eighty thousand dollars, so it's within the range of what we thought the budget was intended for. That will require budget amendment in the future as we go forward with that contract.
So, so what are you giving up with lots of cameras? So, what was the security concern there?
The chief, what we would like to, that we've got hallways, that we would, each floor was going to have a camera, and to be able to, to.
Just general traffic.
Yeah, just general traffic is what it was. And, and we had many more entry points in the original scope that was north of two hundred thousand dollars, and now we're going to do access points of the doors and then the entries, entrances to each department, and so we can, we can know who, who's gone places.
Sure.
You know, most folks, their card won't work out in the police department, it'll be programmed and parameter setup where, where you have access to, so it's just the ability to, to control access in certain places.
And the system's scalable as we grow, grow with it.
Yes. And I, I suspected, you know, implement this, we'll be bringing back, you know, a module to add upon the soft, we have a core soft piece of software that has expandable and will, has a whole bunch of features that we would initially won't enable. It can handle the cameras, it can, it can do a number of other things, but in the future, I see us adding V C D to that mix as well as the shop. We've got millions of dollars of equipment out there, and we need better security out there, but this is a, a starting launch point, you know, for this, that effort.
So, I intend on bringing that contract forward next week and a budget amendment in the future.
So we still have to carry a key card instead of a key?
Yes.
You know, they, they sell an app, and what the guy from the vendor showed me was, says you pop, you pop the case off your phone, you leave a card in the back of there, you put your phone back in, and you wave your phone just like you got an app at the door.
Oh, my goodness.
He goes, it's a, it's a much more, the apps are expensive, he said, and, and I'll sell you one.
It looks like the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll sell you one, but he goes, this works pretty good, and you wave your phone at the door and it works.
So how'd you deactivate it?
So, IT department will manage, or actually the police will manage their piece of it, but, yeah, it's a piece of software and, you know, so, somebody leaves the city, we just go.
So it doesn't like me, so whatever.
Yes.
Yes, we can, we're not, you know, or we've dealt with lost keys, we don't have to rekey the building, or that employee that you terminate, that you didn't get the keys back, and now you gotta rekey the building, so we, we do away with those scenarios because all we gotta do is go into the software and deactivate the card.
Perfect.
We have that system in transit, it, it works pretty flawlessly, and our biggest challenge was setting up a communication link between our H R department and our I T department so that they know to turn off somebody's card when they're no longer employed.
Yeah.
More details.
Yeah. So another topic we presented was going out and hiring a communications consultant, and so again, we have estimated costs of twenty to twenty-five thousand remaining for 2019, and when we feel comfortable that we can afford that, and so that's one thing we're going to look forward doing is put an RFP out there, see who we get who can help improve our communications efforts with our customers and on our website, and I don't know if the mayor wants to speak anymore to that.
So, I talked a little bit to finance, so sorry to repeat myself here, but we, we, Randy and Noah and I have been working on an R F Q for this, and what I'm envisioning is a contract in that range, because of this employee, I'll, I'll find a consultant for that price, but I hope I can.
We'll be wrong.
And this, this would, this contract would be through 2020 to a value, we would try this and see how it works. I see us, this consultant helping each of the departments with their individual webpage and making that content more relevant, and, you know, they're, they're subject matter experts, but they, you know, what we have there could be made much more relevant. I, I see internal communication, or we're talking about an internet within the city and, and communicating internally with employees and amongst ourselves, and, and that content on that internet, and then lastly, you know, pushing information out so that we can avoid scenarios like we had here with the pedestrian pathway that we can, where we're communicating in a, in a better, in a better manner with the public and making them, keeping, keeping them aware of the things that we're doing so that the whole deal surprises people.
I appreciate it.
The community service.
That's really, I think those are good points, but I, I would agree that that's a lot for the person to do.
Well, I'm hoping I get, I hope I get it done for five to ten hours a week, and I hope you guys are wrong, but we'll all, all know, all know here within a month. I, I'm planning to put that out on the street here within the next week to evaluate, you know, interviewing consultants and then, you know, bringing back the contract. I hope in that range and not much more. Otherwise, I'll have to probably scale back what I'm planning to accomplish.
I'm excited to see how that plays out. I think there's lots of future opportunity with that position, including maybe even going part-time with the city and then looking at, because I, because of the various departments.
We did talk about having some overlap between our billing inspector. We anticipate one of our, our only billing inspector to retire this year, and he's been doing a great job, so we proposed going out early and recruiting early so that we have some overlap. We'll have two billing inspectors on staff to allow for a nice transition, so I put a budget to figure out what that might cost, having that overlap. Again, we think it's really valuable because we think there's enough work there. We currently contract out in addition to having our billing inspector, so the work is there, and I think the value of having two individuals kind of trying to do a brain dump and get some institutional knowledge before retirement is really valuable.
Is, is he, John, is he C V O certified, really official?
I think so. I, I, I B C, he doesn't do I F C.
Right.
National Builder Code, not international fire code.
Maybe isn't maybe the official, the official.
C V O is.
We don't. I'm trying to think.
So these were the lists of, of items that we talked about at retreat.
Go ahead, Noah, I'll wait.
Okay. And if you guys have a moment to reflect on the memo and look through the financials, you'll see we're in a prime position to fund these, you know, important activities and kind of keep the city moving forward.
So, one of the things from the retreat that was proposed, and I may have missed the discussion somewhere along the line, that was the chief had a laundry list on that, and has, is that something that is still being looked at, and we'll come back to the Finance Committee, or is it pretty much dead on the road?
What, now, I believe all of that list will compete in the budget process.
Okay.
And, and we've, we've funded a, an additional sergeant.
Right.
We funded, funded a couple of things, so that, I mean, he has some training needs, we might need to add. I, I'm, I'm confident based on the numbers we have, even if with the additional training needs that the police department say that they need, we're going to be able to live within the budget authority that you provided us. I don't think we're going to need budget amendments. We, we might have to reallocate some dollars. I know we talked about the Finance Committee, the jail bill is significantly less this last year to the tune of almost four hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
And so we're gonna take, we, the proposal was to take some of those dollars, I know they're planning for a rec and expense of two to hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar electronic record system, and they're still working through the process to find that, figure out if they're going to go with the county's going to do, what the state's going to do, because they don't want to be leaving that charge, and, and so we're gonna probably swirl a little bit of that money away so that we don't have to come up with a big chunk at once, and fund some of these other things that we're talking about within the budget authority that we have, as well as we, we need a, our, our long-term number for our reserves is about two million dollars, and we're confident that we plan at this budget to be at about one point seven million. I think we're going to be able to fully fund our reserves and not have to, other than the growth in the, we need that reserve, which is not big bites, that we'll be able to add to that and not have to be large chunks. We also fully funded the E N R R fund with additional, initial capital, and we won't have that big bite going over in the next budget too, so we're, we're really in a good place.
Yeah, and I, and I, you know, firmly believe that in listening to my kind of peers, you know, on the committee, but he had a very ambitious.
He does.
Plan, and so I was trying to figure out, was that for 2020 or the next biennial budget, because he, he has some significant.
Training needs and that sergeant, we believe we can cover his training needs in, with the current budget authority, will even have some additional needs that we're gonna analyze as part of the next biennial, as we bring that forward. Probably he's looking for one, one more sergeant. It's that corporal idea, I'm not convinced that's, you know, as, as we always put the budget together, we're gonna have a list of twenty things, and we're gonna be lucky to get to get them.
Yeah.
And so we gotta prioritize and, and then kind of cut line.
No, I was just trying to figure out whether it was this year within that or not.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember that you had talked about fully funding reserves this year, I mean, we're doing great stuff, but it's just, you know, when you list these things, I didn't see anything from the police, and I, he had made, you know, a very progressive plan, and none of us deny that they, they need some assistance down there, and they're doing good things, but I hadn't seen that up here, that's why I was asking.
Well, I don't think anybody is really totally endorsed what he had proposed either, and that's really, you know, the departments have to convince the mayor that this is something that the mayor wants to bring forward in his budget before we get it and get to.
So there'll be more discussion.
Yeah, there'll be more.
Yeah.
There'll be more discussion. And in the interim, you guys did, we did fund some of those requests, which was the additional sergeant, and we know they need the additional training, they're gonna go get that additional training, and, but we don't, I don't believe, I don't believe that we need to ask you for additional authority. We can make reallocations within the authority that you've already given us because we've, we've saved money in other places.
In other words, you're, you're doing fine in this year, in this biennial, and the next one, we'll talk about that when it comes forward, so.
And we do.
We're able to accomplish all these things within.
Yes, as well as take care of a couple of the things that the chief was talking about.
Yeah.
And communication.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I'm waiting to see if you can get that or those dollars.
Appreciate that, appreciate that. Thank you.
So with that, we can move on to the next topic. So the next topic I'm bringing forward is asset management planning, and I've asked Jackie Brown from the Public Works Department to work with me and participate and champion this cause with me up here tonight, so I'm gonna ask her to speak as much as she feels free to, since she's been here all night long, waiting patiently.
She was supposed to be last, she ended up being last.
So what we are trying, and maybe Randy, we could put on the presentation.
I don't know.
Yeah. Asset management plan, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. So what we're, what we're advocating for tonight is for the city to take the next step in how we manage our assets. We're currently doing a lot of good things to build our assets, sewer systems, water systems. We aren't actively managing our assets in a strategic way, we're, we're making data-driven decisions, and it's no fault of anybody's other than we're a growing city and we're learning as we go, as we learn over the last three or four years, and we're observing with our partner cities and counties and what are they doing. And one thing that we have done, the city has taken one step into asset management in this 2019, 2020 biennial period when we invested in our G I S system. So if you recall, when we set the budget, in the prior budget, in the eighteen seventeen budget, there was a line item for asset management, and when departments discussed, when the Finance Department and Public Works got together and discussed about what that meant, there was a lot of miscommunication and misunderstanding about what that meant. What I've come to learn here working with Jackie is that it wasn't, it was all about the vocabulary, the definitions of the words. When they were saying asset management, I, Finance thought they heard one, were saying one thing, and Public Works was saying another. So we worked closely with Public Works to vet out our vocabulary and our definitions and understanding to get to a place where we realized that when we said asset management initially, they were thinking G I S, and that's when we started pursuing down that path in asset management. We hired a consultant through A W C to do a needs assessment for us. They came back and laid out the roadmap, said the city needs to take these actions over the next year to bolster and increase your G I S systems and capabilities. We came to council, and we budgeted for that in, in our twenty eighteen and twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen biennial budget. No, I'm sorry, we budgeted in the nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty budget. So we have performed that work over the last eighteen months, improving our G I S systems, our R G I database. We are now at phase three in that project where we're scanning our as-built documents that are on the fourth floor as well as the public workshop, putting them into an electronic format. Once we have Laserfish onboard, those documents will be in a searchable text format access, so we're moving really towards a paperless system there. But the G I S effort was really the first step in asset management overall. The next step is actually developing a plan for how the city wants to manage assets in the city, what the level of service should be, what assets do we want to manage and how we want to manage those. So that's what we're coming to talk about today, is taking that next step of developing the plan, which will ultimately lead in to purchasing some software in the future that actually tracks the data and sends out service orders and helps us to manage the system. So we put up a couple definitions here on what asset management is. It's the coordination of activities of an organization to realize the value from assets. And I put a couple definitions in the executive summary, which I preferred because it made more sense to me, which is that asset management is a strategy used to meet a required level of service in the most cost-effective manner through the management of our assets for future and present customers. So the reason that's important is because, well, we're putting fifty million dollars, we'll have about fifty million dollars worth of assets that we are not actively managing on a day-to-day basis, and we continue to need to invest in those assets. So with an asset management system, we can start to collect data and make informed data-driven decisions about how we're gonna invest in those assets. So with an asset management system, uh, we can start to collect data and make informed, data-driven decisions about how we're gonna invest in those assets. It also gives us the ability to align our business processes with our goals and objectives that will be set by council and the management team. It'll allow us to critically identify and prioritize what assets we currently have do. Um, so in this body of work, what we expect is to be able to take a full inventory of all our assets, the condition of those assets. And put them on a strategic replacement plan over time. Uh, we want to focus, we wanna be focused and transparent in our infrastructure asset replacement. And also optimize how our maintenance programs are being rolled out. We want to be thinking about how we're going to replace stuff and maintain stuff well in advance of something breaking and us being reactive. Uh, lastly, there are financial reasons why you'd want to manage your assets. A, they're very expensive to build, and so why not maintain them over time? There's also regulatory requirements coming down on local governments over the next couple of years. Um, from Department of Ecology and Department of Health, as well as federal funding, uh, will require an asset management program. And plan to be in place for the city to be eligible for those funding opportunities. Um, so those are very important to us as we have still, uh, significant infrastructure needs, uh, and we would rely upon those funding resources. Can you skip one more, Randy? So who's involved in asset management? Um, well, council and mayor are involved. You guys set policy level decisions, help us decide the level of service that you expect your assets, your water systems, your sewer systems to provide. Um, you're critical to the budget process of where we're putting our money in the systems that we're trying to maintain and build out. Of course, directors and management team are trying to properly align their resources to best, uh, manage our people with our resources and our infrastructure. Um, and the bottom line, it always impacts our citizens and our customers of how we deliver our vital services. So Jackie and I have been working really hard, uh, talking about this for the last six months, eight months. And we've looked at other cities, what are other cities doing, what are the counties doing? Uh, what's working for them? And so what we've determined is that we here at the city don't have the skills and capability of actually putting together this asset management plan. So we're coming forward, asking, uh, for your help and, uh, reaching out and hiring a consultant to come put together the plan, the roadmap for us. Um, to allow us them follow. These are the pieces of that roadmap that we see other cities, um, engaging in and doing that are critical. And that are typically coming out of their RFPs and their bodies of work. Um, again. Assets in this city currently haven't been inventoried, inventory. So we don't know where all the pipes are, all the meters, how old they are, all the sewer mains. We, as we build these big cap projects, we are learning a lot. Um, it would be nice to have a system in place that can capture that data and help us make better decisions for the future. Um, again, that's what we think this, uh, plan can do for us. Do you have anything to add yet, Jackie?
Well, I could just, um, add what I, um, explained to the finance committee earlier. And that's that I kinda see asset management as a three-legged stool. Um, GIS being the first piece of it, then records management, and lastly, a computerized maintenance management system or an enterprise asset management system. Basically as work orders and inventory and, um, doing preventive maintenance, seeing what the age of our infrastructure is, each piece of it. And when that piece is predicted to fail so that we can get in front of the, in front of it. I, I, Noah said earlier that he realized that, you know, that when he talked to public works, they meant GIS when they said asset management. And that's engineering side of public works. As operations side of public works, I think of the computerized maintenance management system as asset management. So it really does, it's, it's, it's all three pieces. And we're down, we're down the road with like one and a half, we just need to go the next step. And I know of many municipalities and special purpose districts that have gone out and purchased what they thought would be a great computer software program for them. Only to find that it didn't work for their situation. And that's why we wanna go down the road of having a consultant to lead us down that path. Number one, identify and quantify and then help us with choosing, um, which software to use.
You see, you don't have it in the working, or it's just not comprehensive?
It's not comprehensive.
We actually have transit into them bringing in a consultant slash software developer that customize or build. The software packages that we use because of our uniqueness. Like everybody has unique aspects, but all of our facilities, our buildings and our shelters and all of our equipment, buses, vehicles, boats. All of that stuff has its own module, if you will, software package. But it was quite a project.
So the end game is here, Noah thinks that, so this roadmap, he thinks this bodywork is gonna be roughly a hundred thousand. John, of course, just like the other consultant said, yeah, I hope, I hope you need to work that for that much, so. Um, you know, we, what we're trying to do is in twenty nineteen, or excuse me, or twenty twenty. In twenty twenty, we'd like to hire this consultant, have this roadmap created so that we have a better idea of what the true cost of some, what the right software, what that software is gonna cost. So we can, uh, plan for that and implement that in the next budget cycle.
Who oversees that whole asset management system? Who would do that?
Who would do that? That would be part of this whole effort. Uh, that's the funny thing is when you have a plan, you start to assign responsibilities and roles. Right now, there really isn't, I guess I'd say public works, and public works say, well, Noah has a piece too, the council has a piece. So having a consultant come aboard, say, here's roles, responsibilities. Here's how you manage a, an asset management program. So we'll have a whole program within a, a plan and then a tool, um, will define these roles.
It would require a whole composition, wouldn't it?
Well, I, I was, Bremerton went through this same, so Noah gave two examples. One was Lacy who didn't.
Therson County.
Therson County, they didn't hire a consultant, bought the software, uh, didn't execute and, and now they're starting over. And then, and backing it up and start, and starting with a consultant. Bremerton, last year, with the consultant route, now went through this process, identified the software. And it resulted in them hiring a half-time FTE to manage this process. Now, there are, there are four times our size, or three times our size. But, uh, it's going to take somebody's time, you're right. But, uh, technology is a way better, you know, whether it's laser fish, whatever, you know, we, these are assets we need to manage. We need to know how often those valves need to be maintained and so on and so forth. And there isn't, you know, there isn't a better way to do it. People, it, it'll take people to manage it, more people to manage it than having a system and a software system that manages it.
I was gonna say, if I could address that, uh, what I've seen in other municipalities is there's a team that oversees as a part of other functions, like maybe Mark and Noah and Nick, you know? And then as the, the nuts and bolts of it, filling out a work order, that's done out in the field on a tablet. Work order pops up on a staff member's tablet, they go do that work order, fill it out, and then as a supervisor, Tony or I would be, or Chris would be looking at that and seeing that it was done and somebody else is managing the inventory. But overseeing the big picture, all three legs of the stool would be like a team that acted periodically.
I would just say, I applaud this effort. I mean, I think for, for us to get our arms around this, really understand where our assets are, where they're at, and be able to practically plan for things versus just being kind of this crisis management. I think we can all reflect back on our terms of council and how many things that had to be known, we didn't plan for better. It just makes everything better, so I think it's critically important to thank you for, for experiencing this effort. It's absolutely right.
And I think we need to go into this with the expectation that it's gonna take some amount of time, whether it's a full FTE or half FTE. If you've gotta have somebody that's gonna do this, because if you don't maintain it, it's worthless.
And utilize it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, maintaining is part of entering data, making sure that the reports are coming out and things are getting maintained and so on.
To extend the useful life of our assets.
Right.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it's just.
Sustainability, you know, it's sweet.
One idea that we had was there's a huge amount of heavy lifting at the beginning to get all the assets in there and get them in there correctly. And one idea that we've kinda kicked around is, is interns, temporary, you know, something like that, training for, you know, people that are looking for office training, that kind of thing. So we've just kinda been, you know, kinda think of all sides of it.
City council.
Lots of life, I'm sure.
It's a new committee, Jay.
He just got, he just got a computer.
We're done with this, that's, that was our last official business item, but I did have one piece of bad news and.
Oh, wait, before we go on, can we share the link? I wanna share the link. Can we go one more slide, Randy? So, uh, no.
You know, the link's tomorrow.
Yes, so for those of you that are interested in hearing more, um, kind of how this asset management program can work, I got a little video, I'll link, I'll email it to you. It's eight minutes long. I think it's worth it because it helped me to understand really why there was so much miscommunication between departments and stakeholders and the true value of managing your assets. And while this initial investment might cost a lot, you're gonna get a big payout of it over the life of these facilities.
So we're gonna go link, watch the video, finance department watched it already.
Finance committee.
Thanks, Jay.
Yeah.
Watch it this earlier.
And we saved you from having to look at it.
They saved me a minute.
But it was good though, I recommend you watch it.
We're gonna watch it.
Yeah, you were certainly, you're very right. Uh, we, uh, the contractor started on the library today and, uh, he didn't find good things. And we're gonna be reaching out tomorrow to our insurance company. Uh, we're not certain that it's be fully covered, but we're gonna start there. It's, uh, there are four, you know, there, it's a scupper that you jump on the top of, at the edge of the flat roof. There's four of them on the building. Uh, we knew that there was a problem with the one corner and it looks like this one corner alone is gonna be about thirty thousand dollars. The contractor approved is twenty thousand dollars. If we assume the worst-case scenario, you can multiply that times four. Um, we hope it's not that bad, but we're assuming worst case.
You're saying the problem with the one scupper we were gonna have, or we may have with the other three?
They went into the access point, we did, we haven't opened the wall up like we did in the one spot, but there's evidence. That it'll be similar, it'll look similar inside the wall.
Is that a, is that a design issue with the scupper system or just an age?
They aged, failed.
So the asset management.
So, uh, it's not, you know, these are gonna be emergency repairs, uh, we'll be doing that after we find out more from our insurance company and what, you know, we're gonna have to procure. A contractor to do this type of work, and probably get involved a little bit of engineering too.
Yeah, I think you need to realize, remember that the, the library was originally what, the liquor store?
Well, post office.
Oh, the post office, the liquor store was Amy's.
Yes.
And so you had a building that was retrofitted and had a new roof at some point. And as a part of that new roof, whether it was a poor scupper system or poor installation, you, we'd never, we'd not be able to go back and really determine at this point whether it was design or construction. The bottom line is it's, it's gone on unchecked for a very long time and there's rotting timbers. I mean, you've got mushy wood, so this isn't something that's just come about, it's been occurring for a very long time.
It's actually a post office that had an addition put on to it. That addition was over the top of what was the loading dock for the post office. And then we put a work on it, or at least portion of it, over ten years ago.
Well, we put a new roof on the front half of the building, the pitch broke about ten years ago, the metal, the new metal roof. And, um, I remember the discussion back at that point that, uh, well, we're gonna build a new library and we shouldn't invest in a new roof on the back side of the building. And, uh, maybe we should have.
And that metal roof was probably the third roof that we put on that building since we owned it, two of them being flat.
Yeah.
Probably.
Clotroft's a good thing.